So you got Matthew on the line?
No, we got everybody else on the line.
All right, well, we got 4:30. Call the meeting to order. We're gonna start the Pledge Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you, all right. We're gonna start off with citizen concerns. Anything that is not on the agenda that anyone would like to speak about?
I can.
You can.
You a citizen?
I'm a citizen, soon to be a real good citizen. Dave Drew, Sheriff, I wanted to give you a little good news. We have a check from Advanced Correctional Healthcare for $91,000. That's our part that we didn't use, so that's good. I would just say this, with the COVID pandemic, I doubt we'll see one of these next year, so let's take advantage of that, but I will give this to-
Dennis?
Dennis?
Just-
Everyone else had their name here.
Just sign the back, Dave.
That's a silly question, asking a roomful of people.
All right, moving on. Any other concerns? Moving on to approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the June 23, 2020 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, A, from Board Administration, approval of resolution for tax suspension for MR. Item five B, approval to appoint Polly Meisner and Julie Hammond to the Woodbury County Library Board. Item six, from Board Administration, approval of transfer of general basic fund to debt service fund. Item seven, from Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Moving on to item eight A, from Board Administration, approval of appropriation of resolution for FY 2021. What do you want to say on it there, Dennis?
Okay, this is our annual, the first one, eight A is our appropriation resolution. We have to pass this before July 1st officially, be able to write payroll, checks, anything like that, APs. So this is our total budget here, broke down by department and division.
I'll move this.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes four to zero. Moving on to eight B, approval of resolution for inter-fund operating transfers for FY 2021.
Okay, on these, I guess we have, they're each an individual resolution. These are our annual transfers. They're done semi-annually, normally, sometimes annually, but I'll go through each one of them, and I think we gotta pass each one separately, right Pat? Okay, first one here, and we'll go through these rather quickly because they're just repeats from the previous years. First one is moving from general supplemental to general basic, the benefit package, like the FICA, I-PERS, health insurance, life insurance, LTD, from general sup to general basic. We actually budget the money in general basic, we levy the money in general sup, then at the end there I transfer the money over. Amount $6,707,235.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Potabom, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next one is rural basic to county library-
Passes four to zero.
Huh?
Passes four to zero.
The next one is rural basic service fund. We levy money there for county library, which covers township share. That amounts to $163,002.16.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is rural basic services, secondary roads. Secondary roads cannot levy a tax. We have to levy it out of rural basic, the $1,500,000 plus local option. We'll meet our minimum levy for secondary roads.
Move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is gaming fund revenues to general basic fund. This is a transfer of $137,068 to help reduce tax asking, so we figured in our tax levy.
Move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one, local ops sales tax funds to the rural basic fund. What this covers here is the funding for the economic development department, community development, in amount of $278,404.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one, local ops sales tax, rural basic. What this is, $39,000, covers our share of the extension individual, does the dams, things like that, out in the rural area.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion?
I'll move that things by, out in the rural area thing.
Whatever that thing.
Out in the rural townships.
That thing out there.
Terrorists, things like that for flood control.
Funding terrorists?
Terrorists.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is gaming revenues fund, revenues to Sheriff's Training Center. This is the share of gaming revenues we use every year, $74,344. The error is made up from funds we did transfer previously, and also the $40,000 donation made by the Sheriff's Union that we spread out over the five-year period.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is general basic fund, transfer of emergency paramedic services in amount of $127,355. This is the half of the cost. We have another one coming up for the other half.
Move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is rural basic to emergency paramedic services. This is where the townships pay for their half of the paramedic services in amount of $127,355.
Move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Next one is tax increment fund to debt service fund. This is our, the tax increment share to pay off the AGP, Dogwood Trail, and the road going into Seattle.
Move it.
Second.
Real nice, that's called 500.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Three to go. Gaming revenue to general sup. This is the reduced taxation amount of $8,322.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
I'm sorry, that last one was the general supplemental fund, not rural basic. Did I say rural basic?
I don't know. Whatever we signed for is right.
The next one is rural basic, from gaming revenues to rural basic to reduce tax asking in amount of $111,285.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Okay, the last one is secondary road fund to general basic fund, $100,000. This covers the purchase, the one quarter, I believe, of the Breezy Farm.
Move it.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you, that's it.
And we have our 4:40 set time as well. Let's see. David, are we supposed to do these in order, or does it matter?
Um, I, whatever is on the agenda, we can go in that order, that's fine.
All right, we'll go nine A. Approval of final plat for the Clem's addition minor subdivision.
All right, thank you, Chairman. This is David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development Department.
I'm getting bomb-.
Marcia Becker.
Right now.
Are we okay to go?
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Marcia Becker and Marilyn Fleming, trustees of the ZM's revocable trust and owners of property located in the northwest quarter of Section 15 in the Woodbury Township on parcel number 884715151004, currently addressed 1858 Glen Ellen Road, are proposing a two-lot subdivision for residential and agricultural purposes, with lot one serving as a homestead and includes 2.47 total acres, and lot two serving as the ag land and includes 20.26 total acres. The property is in the agricultural estates zoning district and is compatible with all proposed uses. It is not located in the floodplain. On May 26, 2020, the zoning commission held a public hearing on this request and subsequently voted to recommend approval of this minor subdivision, with the condition that the septic system meet all applicable codes and be located entirely on lot one if sold to a different owner than of lot two. This property is less than two miles from the incorporated area of Sioux City and does require extraterritorial review under Iowa Code Section 354.9. On June 9, 2020, the Sioux City Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat, and on June 22, the Sioux City Council approved the plat. Outside of any additional public comment or questions, the staff recommends the board receive the zoning commission's May 26 report and approve the final plat as proposed.
I'll move that.
You're removing the final plat?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Well, can we move both at the same time? We receive and approve final plat, or we should probably receive it first, right, Pat?
Only thing on there is approval for final plat.
Okay, well, then I'll move the approval of the final plat.
Second again.
Okay, so that, motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. Any other discussion on this? Anyone to be heard on it?
Anyone on the phone now would be your chance to speak up.
All right.
We're fine.
All right, all right. And see, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to nine B. Receive the zoning commission's recommendation to approve zoning district map amendment, Weed.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, this is David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development. Gail D. Weed, owner of parcel 88, excuse me, parcel number 87461410007, address 2206 240th St., requests to rezone her parcel from the agricultural preservation zoning district to the agricultural estates zoning district for future residential development use. If approved, the applicant intends to create a two-lot minor subdivision. This property is located in a quarter-quarter section that already has two residences, and Section 3.01 of the county zoning ordinance states that not more than two residences shall be allowed on any quarter-quarter section, a nominally forty-acre tract, and if a property owner wishes to subdivide to create more than two parcels on a quarter-quarter section, concurrently with the plating process, the zoning designation should be changed from the AP zoning district to an appropriate classification. The future land use map within the county's planning for 2025 general development plan identifies this area as being zoned agricultural. As such, the agricultural estates zoning district is a good fit for this type of proposal, as its purpose is to provide for a limited increase in the amount of small acreage development, including a controlled expansion of residential uses in appropriate locations throughout the county, while also maintaining the agricultural characteristic of the neighborhood by still allowing agricultural uses. This property is not located in a floodplain, but it is located within the first rank of the Lus Hills, and it is adjacent to the Lus Hills scenic byway. This issue, along with others, were discussed at length during the zoning commission's June 22, 2020, public hearing on this request. Following the commission's public hearing, they voted three to zero to recommend approval of the rezone. The commission also approved the plat as proposed. The Board of Supervisors will review the minor subdivision application subsequent to the completion of this evening's rezone request. Outside of any additional public comment or questions, the staff recommends the board receive the zoning commission's June 22 report, approve the zoning district map amendment, and conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, so B is receive the commission recommendation. I would move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on that? All right, nothing to be heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes four to zero. Moving on, this is now the public hearing in regards to this zoning district map amendment. Anyone to be heard on this item? Anybody on the phones? Nobody at all?
Lots of people on the phone.
All right. I see no discussion. I will move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Or anyone opposed, I should ask, and I heard everyone say aye. Let's see, a motion to approve the zoning district map amendment, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. All right, so now this is the first reading of that ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, Chairman.
Would not approving the zoning district map amendment be a first reading, or am I mistaken on that?
What was that?
Wouldn't-
Looks like we need a motion to conduct the first public hearing from Mr. Gleiser's backup material.
If the board has received the zoning commission's recommendation, and they have approved the zoning district map amendment, I believe it would be appropriate to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
I will move to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. E, receive zoning commission's recommendation to approve the zoning district map amendment for Swanger.
Thank you. Again, this is David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development. Chad Swanger of the Terry V. Swanger Revocable Trust, owners of lots one through five in the Janz subdivision, part of government lot one of Section 2 in the Woodbury Township on parcels number 88470220002, parcel number 88470220004, parcel number 88470220005, parcel number 88470220006, and parcel number 88470220007, all located along the Highway 20 corridor about a mile east of Sioux City, is requesting to rezone their five parcels from the agricultural preservation zoning district to the general commercial zoning district for future commercial development use. If approved, the applicant intends to obtain professional services to prepare the land for commercial development. It should be noted that a western portion of parcel number 88470220002 is located in the floodplain. This issue, along with others, were discussed during the zoning commission's June 22 public hearing on the request. Following the commission's public hearing, they voted three to zero to recommend approval of the rezone with the following conditions. The zoning commission recommends the applicant enter into a recorded paving agreement in compliance with the terms of the current county's secondary roads paving policy. The applicant also comply with any and all easements and encroachment agreements, including area utilities not limited to Northern Natural Gas on parcel number 8847022002, and also the applicant be required to implement efforts, including building and site design, landscaping, and screening to minimize any adverse effects of future land use or development. Outside of any additional public comments or questions, the staff does recommend the board receive the zoning commission's June 22 report, as well as approve the zoning district map amendment, and also conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll move to receive the zoning commission's recommendation to approve the zoning district map amendment.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom. Any discussion on this? Was there much in the meeting on this discussed? David?
Yes, you know, this site, primarily during the stakeholder review process, we identified access issues off of Highway 20 due to the speed limit and site requirements. The DOT would not grant access directly to the site, so it would have to be accessed off of a county road, and therefore the county engineer is requiring that once a certain level of traffic counts be reached, the developer be required to execute the paving agreement and pave that section of the road. Along with that, there were some easements across the site that would impede development. Specifically, there was a large Northern Natural Gas line along the western portion of this location, and outside of that, the developer recognizes that there would need to be some grading work would need to occur, and once that grading, or once the professional services are obtained and they are able to identify the buildable sites of this location, then they would begin to pursue the plating process and conduct a minor subdivision along with the Board of Supervisors as well.
Any other questions for David, or? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then it passes four to zero. Let's see. Now, this would be the public hearing for, let's see, motion to approve district map amendment, so this is all on that Swanger property. Anyone to be heard on that for the public hearing?
Hi, this is Chad Swanger. Wanted to thank the county and everybody for taking the time for this matter. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. I'd move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that. So motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick to close the public hearing. All those in, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero, and then I'll move to approve the zoning district map amendment.
Second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. I'll move to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Moving on to item H. Receive zoning commission's recommendation to approve the zoning district map amendment for the Peterson property.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, this is David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development. Brian D. Peterson, owner of parcels 884630300012, and parcel number 88463030004, and parcel number 88463030006, all within the Floyd Township, requests to rezone this property from the agricultural preservation zoning district to the agricultural estate zoning district for future residential development use. If approved, the applicant intends to create a 13-lot and one-out lot minor subdivision. This property is located in a quarter-quarter section that already has two residences, and as Section 3.01 of the zoning ordinance states, not more than two residences shall be allowed on any quarter-quarter section, and if a property owner wishes to subdivide to create more than two parcels on a quarter-quarter section, then concurrently with the plating process, the zoning designation should be changed from the AP to an appropriate classification. The future land use map within the county's planning for 2025 general development plan does identify this area as being zoned rural residential, which is equivalent to our current today suburban residential zoning district, which provides for a higher residential population density and restricts the land use to primarily single-family residential. Suburban residential is our closest zoning district to a city-zoned zoning district. Another factor to take into consideration for identifying an appropriate zoning designation for this request is that while parcel number 8846303006 does include about one acre in the floodplain zone A, the most recent draft flood map from FEMA, which we do anticipate being adopted in the next 18 months, shows the entire project area being in the special flood hazard area. As such, staff recommended the agricultural estate zoning district as being a good fit for this proposal, as it, as its purpose is to provide for a limited increase in the amount of small acreage development, including a controlled expansion of residential uses in appropriate locations throughout the county, while also maintaining the agricultural characteristic of the neighborhood by still allowing agricultural uses. And essentially, with the, with the flood map issue, we felt that a lower population density zoning district was a good middle-of-the-road solution for this particular request. This issue, along with others, were discussed at length during the zoning commission's June 22 public hearing. Numerous stakeholders- Are you, is it okay?
You're back now.
You're back now.
Okay, I'm sorry, as I was saying, this request was discussed at length during the zoning commission's June 22 public hearing. Numerous stakeholders provided written recommendations to address all of the known impediments to the proposed development site. Following the commission's public hearing, they voted three to zero to recommend approval of this rezone request. The commission also approved the plat with the condition the lots be serviced by an internal road or cul-de-sac and deed- internal road or cul-de-sac, and deed restrictions be placed on all lots that would require any structure built on the property be required to elevate one foot above the base flood elevation as determined by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and also in accordance with the county's floodplain regulations. The Board of Supervisors, you will not review the minor subdivision application, you will review the minor subdivision application subsequent to the completion of this rezone I would say that outside of any additional public comment or questions, the staff recommends the board receive the zoning commission's June 22 report, approve the zoning district map amendment, and also conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, well, I'd move to receive their recommendation.
Just to receive the recommendation, I'll second that.
Motion by Radick, second by Potabom. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Let's see. Now to approve the zoning district map amendment. I'd rather discuss that first.
I believe you want to hold a public hearing.
Okay, well, on item H, it says receive the recommendation, okay, yeah, to approve. Okay, now we'll go into aye, public hearing. So, we're now in the public hearing on that. Anyone to be heard? Assume this is what more people are waiting for here.
My name is Gary Walters, and I'm an adjacent landowner to this tract of land to the west. And I guess I'll start my comments by just saying that I'm not opposed to it being rezoned to Ag Estates. It's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to make sure that what the zoning commission asked for was an internal street or some internal access. I'm concerned about safety of the highway, and I'm concerned about the flooding prospects of the property. So, I don't know, is this the time for me to make those comments, or is it not the time? Because, like I say, I'm not here to oppose a zoning change. I'm here to oppose, or I'm just here to make sure that the zoning commission's sort of tethered covenants that they've added to this are put in place. So, is this the right time for me to speak? Okay, well, to be clear, I'm not opposed to the zoning. I just, I'm here to address the safety issues of, you know, as the project is proposed, there are, there would be 11 accesses, or at least eight or nine, it looks like, to Old Highway, or to Old Highway 141. I think the safety of that is very questionable. The elevations don't lead to good driveways, good access. There's definite speed issues on that road.
What is the address of this? That was, you mentioned parcel numbers, but what was the address?
You know, would it be in the 1700s? I'm further down the road, and 1898 changes.
I'm in 1927.
So, I suppose it's in the 1700 range. Mr. Heck, what's his first name? He lives across the road. He looked up his address, and this would be right across the road from him. But, anyway, I, safety is one issue. The other is the flooding potential. I serve on the Farmers Drainage District. I'm familiar with water down there. I'm familiar with the problems that water causes. I'm also a member of the Woodbury-Sullen Water Conservation District, so by my affiliation with those two groups, I guess I stand before you suggesting that you take very seriously the recommendations that are forthcoming about maybe the change in the flood zone, because water is a critical issue here. From the hills, comes from the hills fast, doesn't get into the drainage stitches fast enough, and pools in this area. So, I just, I guess, I don't, I'm happy with the zoning commission's recommendation that there be an internal access, and along with that, I would even suggest that the, that internal access became external on D-38 rather than 141, simply because traffic is slowing down on D-38 for the stop sign that's there at the intersection of 141. So, it would just seem to be, to be a safer access, since traffic is already accelerating or decelerating there, as opposed to just the flyby that they're doing on 141. And I would, I'm not, so I like the idea of an internal road. I also, I'm not sure about the base flood elevation of being one foot above it. I, you know, I've got pictures, I know how high the water gets out there, but in relation to the base flood elevation, I am not knowledgeable about where that would put these homes, if it would be way above the water lines that I've seen in the past, or at the water line, or even below the water line. So, you know, I guess I would suggest that before anybody got to build out there, that the powers that be may want to see where that base elevation level is, and of course, add it to the one foot to see if it makes sense from a reasonable standpoint as to whether these people get up above the water. And one last point is, my land would technically, I think, be downstream from this. In other words, the water from this project runs across the south end of mine to get to the Little Whiskey Creek, which is the ultimate outlet of the water. And there is just no way that some of these lots can be conducive to a septic tank drain field, and I know the Sullen District Health has commented on that, and there probably are ways to make good septic systems, but I would just hope that those regulations be strictly enforced in this case, because when there's high-water times, the, any effluent from poorly operating drainage systems is going to flow across me, which of course would be a problem, so.
I guess that was my next natural question, was what would be the septic requirements down there, except that land is a lot of gumbo, isn't it?
Yeah, I won't say it's gumbo. There's multiple soil types on this property, so depending on the lot you looked at, there, it might be acceptable, but, you know, the soil type is one thing, the natural water table is another, and I think, you know, drain fields need some space under the surface to operate, unless, you know, they can maybe build above-surface drain fields. I'm not a septic drain field expert, but I do know that most drain fields need good drainage, and with the exception of a half handful of these lots, I just can't see that it could happen. Any other questions, comments? So, I would just encourage you to follow the recommendations of the zoning commission and create an internal road, and make sure the homes get built high enough. Thank you.
On that note, I mean, if the property's a floodway by federal regulations, you can't even get a permit to build on it. So, you know, as a person that's going to build out there, I mean, by common sense, they're not going to build where their house is going to flood. You know, they would do whatever it takes to get their home out of the flood area, anyway. I'm still, you got the parcel number, David? Gotcha.
That's the one that's in the, potentially will be in the floodplain?
No, that's just the first one that I read off there.
006 is the one in the floodplain, or will be?
The, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, the 88463030006. See, supervisors, the issue is currently, out of this tract of land, only about an acre is in the current floodplain zone A. The draft flood map shows the whole parcel being in the floodplain. And so, what the state floodplain coordinator has recommended to us is that the county require a deed restriction on all lots in anticipation of that floodplain map and change. And so, that way, this would pick up, you know, homeowners would be, it would show on their deed, there would be a restriction that they'd be required to elevate one foot above the base flood elevation. And so, you know, sort of as a measure to put some protection on there, so when people buy the property, they know, because currently, it's not in the floodplain. And so, they would know that there's a requirement. And then, once the flood map is changed, then it's just, you know, a normal permitting As it relates to Mr. Walters' comments, I would say that he has been a very helpful stakeholder in this process. He has provided, you know, compelling evidence and testimony in support of his recommendation. And I feel that through our stakeholder review process, we have done as thorough job as possible to identify all of the known impediments to this site, and we have received, you know, the written recommendations to address these impediments. It may not be the ideal location where someone may want to, it may not be where you want to build a house, but it is still up to that property owner's prerogative. And even if, even in the floodplain, permitting structures is still an allowed use. And so, with the comments about the well and septic, Sullen District Health has addressed some of those concerns in their written recommendations, and essentially, what they state is through their permitting process, they would, you know, take soil samples, do water table analysis, and then provide the recommendation or requirements that would be needed in order to put a septic system there. Granted, that is going to be a more expensive system, but, you know, it's added cost, but it's not my decision, I guess.
You have a caller, or, oh, you got the map. That's it. You got it up on here. I was just looking down the road. I mean, it was discussed on access, but if you go right over to the 1800 area, or 1900, or, it looks like there's quite a few homes in a row there. I mean, if I count the driveways up, because some of them have multiple access driveways. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, there's 11 driveways in that little corner of Old 141.
The last thing I would like to note, supervisors and those listening, is that the applicant began this process, I would say, probably 18 months ago, and it began with an initial meeting in my office, along with the county zoning coordinator and the county engineer. The proposal has been discussed at some length, and it's been, it's been known upfront that the applicant is not choosing to put in a frontage road due to costs and due to reasons of their own. And the proposed plat, which is not in front of you today, but it is tied to this rezone request, the proposed plat was originated from those initial discussions. Granted, the county engineer's recommendations, his written recommendations provided what I would call like a good, better, best set of options, where his preference would be the applicant build an internal road, and access be provided from that internal road. He does not, wasn't, the county engineer was not fond of providing individual lots for every lot posed on the plat, but he was willing to come up with a schematic of shared drives, and that is what ultimately the applicant chose during the public hearing on June 22 with the zoning commission. The zoning commission voted in favor of recommending the internal road, along with those conditions, deed restrictions on the floodplain be met as well. So, if this rezone is approved, you will receive that minor subdivision request, and the question at hand will essentially be the access road. Or, excuse me, access to the lots. And I would recognize the fact that what we are proposing, or the plat that you will receive as proposed, recognizes the zoning commission has a recommendation that may be different from what the board of supervisors and the applicant ultimately reach consensus on.
Do we have a mock-up of what the plat would look like?
Yes, it's included in the packet material.
I can't get the backup material to come up on my phone right now.
Essentially, the lots are along 141. And there's two larger lots along D-38, I believe. And then, one outlot dedicated for green space in the north corner.
Southeast corner there, Outlet A.
Yes, sorry.
To me, I think the shared driveway situation would make more sense in this area, especially if six tenths of a mile down the road, you allowed 11 driveways.
For the record, my name's Brian Peterson. My address is 1739 Charles Avenue, Lawton, Iowa. And I rose to speak because if you didn't pass this, then I wouldn't be able to speak at the subdivision level. So, we actually worked with the county engineer to, it was his idea to come up with a shared driveway, where two lots would share one driveway, then we could have five or six driveways going out on the road instead of 10 or 11. And the idea of having an internal road, while lots have more value than just farmland, they don't have enough value to, if you require that there would be an internal road, that will probably be a field always, because there's not enough money to build the road, and then, and then, and then, because it would raise the price of the lot, I don't think that we would ever be able to do that.
Well, then, would we be asking it to be a private road, or would it be something that we'd end up maintaining, or?
There's a process for that, Keith.
Well, come on up there.
Mark Narwood, Berry County Engineer. There is a process for a subdivision road to become a secondary road. Bullmire Avenue off of County Road D-12 is the most recent road where that has been done. Outlet 5 on the Bullmire subdivision was divided into eight separate residential lots. A cul-de-sac road was built into the subdivision. The cost of that was never shared, but that road was built fully in compliance with state urban design standards and county secondary road standards. Upon completion of that road, it became a county road, was accepted into our system. We require pavement.
That was Bullmire, you said?
Bullmire, yes.
That's off of D-12.
That's off of D twelve?
Off of D twelve, just east of Sioux City.
That's okay. I know where that's at.
Yeah, there's, uh, four subdivisions up there, I believe, that are all served by internal roads that are similar to this, where we have, uh, multiple lots. Um, you know, David summed up my comments pretty well. My preference would be that there's only one point of access or one, maybe two points of access in and out of this. Those comments were incorporated in, in my review of this. I also looked at it from the point of view of the individual lots, should the board choose to go that way. Uh, there are some restrictions on driveway access. I think it's primarily with lots, uh, six and three were the ones that had difficulty because there is a little bit of a hill that breaks over the top there and the driveway locations for those two lots would be restricted. Fewer points of access onto the road is better than having thirteen of them out there. Outlot A has flooded at least four times. There is a designed road grade overflow at the intersection of D thirty-eight and, uh, Highway One Forty-One. We were unable to raise that road grade overflow when we built the bridge immediately south of there because the permitting on that road grade overflow tied to the bridge on, over a little whiskey creek there. So that area will, you know, under the prior floodplain map, the current floodplain map and the future floodplain map is all an area that will be dealing with flooding, um, as long as we can project in the future. Again, in my short time here of twelve years, water's gone over the road there four times. Again, we, we did come up with, uh, suitable single axle, axes, suitable driveways to service the lots as platted in the subdivision. It's still my recommendation that there would be an internal road to service it however to limit the number of axes out on the road. I prefer to see its access come down to County Road D thirty-eight. His surveyor was good enough to go out there and stake it so that we could at least do the review if the board chose to allow it to have multiple accesses out on the One Forty-One. That is a fifty mile an hour road at this time. It's one of the heaviest used routes we've got with seventeen hundred vehicles per day. I guess if you have any other questions, you can.
One Forty-One has seventeen hundred?
That stretch of One Forty-One has seventeen hundred vehicles per day. We're nine hundred on D thirty-eight, I believe, is the count.
Yeah, it was nine something. I saw that in here.
Mm-hmm. Nine eighty? I'm sorry, it's thirteen seventy. Seventeen hundred is a couple of miles north, but it's thirteen seventy at this location. And that's the twenty fifteen traffic count, not the, the twenty nineteen hasn't been released yet.
Can I address one more thing?
Sure.
I'll just make the point about, uh, Mr. Rattig apparently counted eleven driveways down the road and maybe James Loomis will address that as well. But with that said, and I don't know exactly what spot you were in, but I'm right down the road and I have two driveways and I don't live there. So there's two driveways with, you know, no daily use. Uh, James has a couple that get him into his acreage and so I.
I was just looking on the satellite, so.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify.
Sure.
There might be, there might be a driveway there, but that does not mean that it's gonna have the use that these eleven homes along One Forty-One have on a daily basis.
Just because there's eleven parcels doesn't mean there will end up eleven homes.
No, but there will be eleven homes worth of cars. Coming out of somebody's driveway, no question.
If somebody buys three of those lots to have six acres.
Right, right.
You know, he'd still only have one driveway.
That's true.
So just because there's eleven lots doesn't mean there's gonna be eleven driveways there either. And especially if we're looking at sharing them.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's why water in the site is, is the predominant feature of.
Sure.
Why it should fail.
Well, I mean, we deal with water all over Sioux City, Iowa. I mean, there's so many lots that are low, so many that are high. I mean, people do things to address water so they can build. I personally own a lot that is considered in the floodway by the United States government and I can't even get a permit on it. But things have been done to address the flooding. Uh, it should come out of the floodway. I should be able to build on it someday soon, but I have to just wait, you know? I can't just do something right now. So anyone else that buys one of these lots would know the situation of, you know, what they have to do in order to build. So that's on whoever purchases it. It's a market decision. You know, I'm here to let somebody have the right to do what they want with their own property as long as they follow the law. So.
And as long as it's safe to the public as well. Yeah, there's a lot of water problems in this city and in this county because it's been settled for a hundred and twenty-five years and the, you know, people didn't consider all these things that back then. And now there's more concentration of people. The rainfall has doubled in the last thirty years. You have an opportunity here to maybe prevent a problem in the future. That, that's, that would be my point.
Well, and, you know, to that point too, though, you look at like the Dakota Dunes area and, uh, you know, Spanish, Spanish Bay or, you know, all those areas where, I mean, that was all underwater in twenty-eleven, yet all those lots still sold. People still built houses.
Well.
And now one of them's valued under a million dollars. So, I mean, people choose what they do.
They come and see when they have a problem. They come and see the government. It's, the government is here supposedly to try to.
I think they.
Help us, uh, yeah, I'm all for freedom of this and that too.
Sure.
But you, you've, you've got a job to protect the public.
Right.
And I'm just, I've, I've just pointed out the risks that are involved in this project, you know?
And I.
Obviously, I can't control what happens.
Sure.
But I, I just wanna make sure it's in the public record that, that there are high hazards to this site and that you plan the future accordingly.
Sure.
That's all I ask.
No problem.
James Loomis, nineteen twenty-seven, Old Highway One Forty-One, Bronson. I am neighbors with Gary Walters. I am only here to express my concerns, uh, to the board. The position that the board takes on whether to move forward is up to the board, obviously. I would only echo some of the comments expressed by Mr. Walters that my wife and I moved into our home, um, at that location in the spring of twenty fourteen. And that whole area has been underwater twice since we've moved there. There is significant flooding there that, uh, Mr. Walters, uh, talked about and presented to the zoning board commission, uh, most recently in March of twenty nineteen. That whole area was underwater. And I think, I understand that there may be a new, uh, flood map by FEMA that would indicate that the entire range is, is in a floodplain, but I, I think that, um, the old one, if that's the one that is being used to suggest that the, the small southeast corner of outpost A, uh, is the only area in the floodplain, I think it is not accurate. And so I would express my concern to the board regarding that issue and ask the board to consider that in its decision-making process. I would further ask the board to consider in its decision-making process that, um, as Mr. Walters indicated, that is a highly trafficked area and as the county engineer indicated, that that is a highly traveled area, that intersection there, uh, not just with, um, vehicles, but agricultural vehicles as well, both on D thirty-eight and Old One Forty-One. But there is also a lot of traffic, um, that would consist of motorcycles and sports cars. And if you think that the highway's posted speed limit is maintained and observed in that area, I think, um, you're naive as a prosecutor. Um, that just doesn't happen. And so I think that that isn't a consideration that the board needs to consider. Additionally, I would say that, uh, there is a lot of bicyclists that travel both on D thirty-eight going into Sargeant Bluff there and on Old One Forty-One. So it's not just, um, commercial traffic going in and out to Sioux City, agricultural traffic, and it's also traffic by bicycle as well. And again, I'm not here to prevent people from being industrious and living where they want to live and making those marketplace decisions on their own and taking the risks. I would only ask the board to take those things into consideration and however it deems appropriate and moving forward. Thank you for your time.
If, if I may, I would just like to, a couple things. Um, for one, um, we have a contractor that tells us five of those lots, actually there's enough elevation you could have a walkout basically. And so it's not all flat, it's not all flat. I don't know if you see. And the other thing is the, the design that we put in front of you, um, and with the work of Mark of, of having a shared driveway, that meets the requirement of the county for what the rules are. Um, you know, we're not asking you to change the rules so that we could have a house with a hundred and ten foot wide front, you know, with a, as narrow as it would be in town. And the other thing that I can't understand, it's like, well, so we're trying to do this so that, that other people can live out in the country when it was safe enough for the gentleman that just spoke here that he bought, bought a house on the other side of the road and he pulls out on that road and so it was safe enough for that person to drive, but then it's not safe for, for, to, to have some other ones right there. I have a hard time understanding that. But anyway, in closing, I would just like to say, we, the design, and we've been working on this since September of, um, eighteen, I believe, um, uh, the design that we gave you, um, adheres to all of the county's rules, um, and I believe Mark said that it was his preference but not his requirement to have a, an internal road. Um, and so I would hope that you would, would look at it the way that we submitted it, um, because I don't like, just like when he said he didn't know what the cost of the internal road was. At the other, I don't know that with an internal, the cost of internal road that there would ever be any. At least we would probably never do that. And so thank you for your consideration.
Looking at, you know, again, the satellite image, if you look at where the wet spots are, it's mostly the back portion of like Lot thirteen. You know, just looking at it. Cause part of me said maybe it would've made more sense to have them all, all your two acre parcels along Two Hundred and Tenth Street, but, um, it does look like the way the topography is, it, it would probably be better to have it the way you have it. I don't, I don't wanna have another road to maintain. I do look at seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of real estate taxable at an egg rate, which is what? Dennis, what's the egg rate right now for?
On the road?
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars per thousand.
Twenty-five per thousand, so.
Federal school district, it's approximately twenty-five, twenty-seven.
I mean, just one of these parcels will pay more than the entire parcel does. And part of the way you grow your county and your tax base is through development. If we got somebody here willing to develop a parcel, I think we should be conducive to that development. Obviously, you know, addressing some concern to safety and shared driveways, I think cuts down half the access points, but yet still makes it feasible to build. And the other area that had that cul-de-sac that Mark brought up, uh, they did share driveways on that as well. I don't know. I, I'll listen to anybody else on the board, but, I mean, I'm, I've always been a pro-development individual and I think it's incumbent upon us to allow people to, you know, use their property the way they determine they want to as long as it's not, uh, you know, illegal. And the only downside to allowing this is that you might have a few more people that build, you know, half a million dollar, a million dollar houses out on these acreages and then they're gonna complain about the smell of cows and agriculture. But they chose to move out by it, you know? So that's obviously a marketplace decision again.
Well, I've, and I spoke to several people today and my big problem is still the safety issue of too many driveways coming up onto One Forty-One. And I've driven that back in my motorcycling days often enough and in my car, that that's the spot where you come around that last curve in the road and unfortunately that's a spot to, um, open it up. And, uh, I, I'd wanna see development occur also, but I, the safety issue, and that's always gonna be my top priority in anything I decide. And it worries me, the number of accesses up onto One Forty-One. And I've tried and tried to look at it all day to see if there's some way to get more access out onto D thirty-eight because to me that would be so much better, but I can see how that wouldn't work real well either. I, uh, I just have, say, Mark, on your line of sight coming up onto One Forty-One, there's quite a bit of an elevation there. And you said it meets the minimum line of sight?
Well, with proper driveway construction, typically they would build it so that there's a flat spot to sit so you can look at both ways before you get out on the road.
There's a room on each of these to do that?
I believe there is. Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to go from the last time I drove it and I'm going to this.
Lots seven through eleven, you're coming out almost level with the road.
Okay.
Um, lot one through, I wanna say five, there's a pretty good difference in the road elevation, but, but again, normal driveway, when they build it, they would build it so they've got room to sit and be able to look both ways. And that's the way the driveways were evaluated was that they met that minimum site distance requirement, assuming they could.
Get level.
Have a good.
Cause I was more worried if they were coming up still at quite an elevation.
Yeah, if they were coming up and sitting much lower, uh, than the roadway, there would be a bigger problem with, uh, lots three and six. Six again comes out almost level. One through five are the ones where there's the elevation difference. But again, uh, those drives would have to be constructed in compliance of county standard, which would give them, yeah, at least a car length to be able to come up and sit.
Somebody asked me today what the standard was and I said, I didn't know, but I was gonna find out from you.
Yeah.
So that's why it has to have at least a car length or close to a level.
We would require that as part of the construction. And we build everything within the right ways, so we'd build it out flat and then ramp it hard where they'd have to meet our elevations, so. We, we always build with safety in mind.
All right. That's, like I said, that's always gonna be my first priority. I don't care what we're talking about.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Are we reviewing the actual subdivision tonight? Um, my understanding of this is you, for the zoning.
Well, the, uh, let's see, so this is public hearing, zoning district map amendment. So their amendment had the requirement that the property owner put in a, an access street.
Uh, no, there, there was no condition placed on the zoning change. The condition was placed on the plat as it was proposed. Uh, these are two separate items or two separate actions, um, but I, I think it was imperative to have this discussion because, um, you know, a, as the applicant has indicated, um, if that requirement is put on them, they, I guess there's no subdivision to move forward.
Yeah, I think that's what he said. Even if we rezone it, but then say we're not gonna approve the plat unless there's an internal road, you're saying that's probably gonna kill the deal anyway.
Yes, and so that, it was the hope that we would be able to reach consensus, um, between the board of supervisors and the applicant on ultimately, uh, what will be proposed, um, with a minor subdivision. But the rezone is the, is the vote before you today, uh, but we do ask that you take into consideration your vote today, uh, with, uh, future outcome on the subdivision.
So what we're discussing now, though, this is the public hearing, the motion to approve zoning district map amendment. So this does not include?
This, this would solely change the zoning district for these parcels from agricultural preservation to agricultural estate.
Okay. So I don't know, I believe we're all in agreement on that or not?
Yeah, I have no problem rezoning, but, but I think, to be fair to the developer, I think he wants to know going forward what's gonna be required of it.
Sure.
Otherwise, why do it?
And where do we discuss that part? Then David, is that under the ordinance or?
Um, no, I, I think that during the public hearing or during, uh, your discussion on the map amendment would be both appropriate times to, uh, flush that out.
I don't know, I mean, I just, I get public safety on the safety standpoint, but a car a minute, you know, I'm pretty sure I could pull out of a driveway that's level with the road. And I would trust my wife to be able to do it, I would trust anyone else, like my teenagers, to be able to do it.
We could be silly enough to say, yeah, and I could hit you.
Yeah, but if you're the one violating the law because you're speeding, that's still on you, is it not?
It's a car entering the highway that's going to be a fault.
Keith, have you been out to the site?
I've been by it many times, I haven't been out there recently.
Well, I would encourage you to go out there, stop where the road has the crest. It's called Walnut View because there are a line of walnut trees beautifully along the highway there, but they haven't been maintained in 30 years, there's low hanging branches. It, it's definitely an impediment to line of sight as well, so, you know, almost, if I had any control over it, and I said, well, there was going to be a whole bunch of driveways along there, you'd almost have to remove the trees, just to help with the safety. So I, I just, it, it, it's a beautiful subdivision on the map, I love the theory, I agree that, that we need more opportunities in the country for people to build, but, and I own the land right next to it. If this thing flourished, Gary would flourish too.
Yeah.
But you know what, it's not going to flourish, and Gary doesn't want to sink with the ship, and so that's, it's really a bad site.
Matthew or Rocky, or come on up, sir?
My name's Dan Peterson, 515 North Pine Street, Lawton, Iowa. I, so I'm brothers with Brian, working on the development with him. I get asked, I'm in the real estate business with Keller Williams, and also involved with Lawton Bronson Activities. I get asked multiple times, all the time, about, is there opportunities to build in the county? The school district asks me, the superintendent asks, what we're doing, if there's anything we can do, they're familiar with our development that we did on East Sioux City, if there's anything we could do in the county. So that's, we've been working on it roughly on and off for two years. The times come that it's to bring it to you because of that demand. I've been asked, even since this has made agendas, multiple times from real estate people, and it's starting to get spread that, you know, the potential is there, and I get, I've got three phone calls in the last week about these lots. So I think there's demand there. Obviously, they want, they want access onto a paved highway, so you should go do this in a different location off of gravel or secondary road, makes it more difficult. Coming here adds a lot of value to those people that want to build homes out in the country, yet still have paved access. Thank you for your time.
And about how much would five million in property in residential pay? I mean, because that's about what you'd end up with by the time these are developed.
About $20,000.
To the county? Or just total?
Overall, total. County did about 45% of that.
So.
There is.
Keith, I like your economic ideas.
Sure.
I, I would, I would pose the question, why doesn't the county develop the county home farm?
That's a great question.
And turn it into a five million dollar?
That is a great question. I brought it up, don't worry.
He just thinks me is a good question.
I, I brought it up before.
Personally, I like the idea of the development, but I, I'm, I'm still a little bit with Marty and the safety thing with the county engineer, and I like the development part, I really do, I'm just, I mean, it, I just, I mean, the sheriff's office knows, I've, I've driven that road hundreds of times, so I know, I know they're out really well, and I know that, I don't naturally drive 50 miles an hour on that road, and that's no fault of the road, it's just a nice, smooth road, and, and I'm, I'm not opposed to the rezoning, but I would have to lean towards a frontage road to, to limit the access, is where I'm going to sit.
What else can the county do in regards to periphery, so to speak? We can cut trees, can we reduce speed limits, things like that, ideas for the county engineer?
I don't think cutting the trees would make any difference, it's a straight piece of road through there. Where I typically set up my target when I'm evaluating driveways is about where a driver would sit before they enter out onto the road. And I really don't believe the trees are that much of an impediment for looking both A spot regrade on the hill is something that could be done, albeit an expensive job. Speed limit, I hate speed limits out in isolated areas like this. That was one of the fears I put in my, in my recommendation to planning and zoning, was that when you get driveways in a length like this, where they're relatively tight proximity, it isn't long bef, if that subdivision were to fill up before those people would come in and request a speed limit, and then you're putting that and inconveniencing almost 1,400 vehicles a day that use the road to get to and from work.
Only if they obey it.
I, 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 yeah.
What's correction?
Remember, assume they obey.
I, I did police work long enough to know that, you can put out any sign you want.
Right. And, and without enforcement, in many cases, those aren't observed. You only have to look at the problems and complaints we have down at Holly Springs, where we have a speed limit of that nature, where you just have that spot 35 mile an hour in the middle of a 50 mile an hour road. You get better compliance when you're on the edge of an area like, when you get up on the Morning Side Avenue portion of Old Highway 141, where we're right on the fringe of Sioux City. We're a 35, a 45, and then we hit 50 when we get to the bottom of the hill past the current Peterson subdivision there.
Is 141 state or county?
It is county.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We got that road in 2004, and, you know, some of those older subdivisions, we could talk about driveways there, but those were cited under state requirements, not under county. But the speed limit is a possibility, and it's something we would expect to be requested at, at the point in time where it, it has, well, 220th Street, our, our Seal Coat Road down there, is one that was 55 as housing got denser, it's down to 35 now. But it is not a major collector route that's got 1,370 vehicles a day using it.
Out of curiosity, what, like Correctionville Road, is that 55 out there, or?
Correctionville is a 55 mile an hour road.
Because 10 years ago, I mean, how many houses were out there?
Um, most of those houses have got some age on them. There has not, has not, a lot of new construction along Correctionville Road. I think Rocky's house is the newest out there.
There's some Colash, was it one of those Colash something?
Yeah, all the, that subdivision there dates back into the 90s, I believe.
Because they were just selling lots recently.
Those are very large lots that are, that are pretty well spaced, they're in an area with a good site distance. Yeah, there has not been a request for a, a lower speed limit there, surprisingly, nor along Charles Avenue.
Because I, I know when I moved here, none of those were here.
Yeah. And I, and I think part of it is, we're 250 vehicles a day.
Sure.
On Correctionville Road. Charles, I would have to look at the map, but I'm sure it's probably in that 250 to 300 vehicle a day range. You don't have, you don't have people sitting there waiting for that opportunity to jump out of the road. We also have, I guess we've had a couple of requests on 220th Street as we get closer to Sergeant Bluff. Generally, I have not acquiesced to those, we've done speed studies, we show that the 75th percentile speed is actually above 55 miles an hour. We have unlimited site distance there, so we've not gone along with speed limit requests on 210th, I should say, up D-38 near Sergeant Bluff. But that doesn't mean we haven't had requests.
So the last time we discussed the shared driveways, what did we come up with for the number of driveways onto Old 141? Does anyone know?
It's, I, I left my recommendation sitting over there. I think with shared driveways, there were a couple that had to have their own driveway.
Is what's on here the last discussion?
That's the last, yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought there'd been more discussion after that.
No. It, there, there's only so many places I can cite them. And going with a shared driveway option, that's where they pretty much had to be to make it work. Did you have any other questions?
So that's just option two, where you put preferred?
I believe it's two is the shared.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight driveways.
For 11, well, 12 if you count the outlet. There's no problem for the two on, the two lots on D-38. A couple of, I think the ones already served by a driveway, and site distance there is pretty unlimited. Again, the ones that were the real trick were the lots three and lot five, or, three and lot six. Again, fewer points is better. I, I would hate to see a driveway at every one of those lots potentially.
I actually think there's an addition to the driveway in lot six, David?
It's between six and seven. It's right about the corner of six and seven now.
So you're adding five more driveways than what there are, although they'd be used?
Well, you're adding seven more in here right now.
Okay.
We're talking about 141 at this point.
Right.
There's eight along 141. Yeah. There's eight along 141.
Well, I, I, it's just eight total, so I'm guessing a couple of them, probably six, two would be out onto D-38.
That's right, we would be out.
And how much distance?
Well, the full run of that, 11 lots, 200 feet wide at least each, so we're talking 27 feet minimum, so.
It's about 26.
Half a mile, just under.
It's probably half a mile.
I just have one other question, or comment, when we're talking about speed limits, one consideration, with the development of 141, getting more dense as you get towards Sioux City, maybe something we look at is a three-way stop at D-38 and 141?
No. No. It's just an idea, so.
Then people speed up more to kind of see.
Or, or we could put the most useless thing, a yield sign.
Just, let's put a sign that says, don't speed.
How about slow taxpayers at play?
Yeah, there you go. I, I, I want to make, I want to make sure for Mr. Peterson that I'm perfectly clear. I mean, I have no problem with the rezoning, but I'm going to tell you, if it comes to plating, I don't know if I could support six driveways in that area. Maybe I could be convinced to, but I don't want to tell you I would and have you go through all of it and, and come back, because right now, I'd have to say, I probably wouldn't, unless we could figure out a way to cut that down, or, fine. I keep looking, there's no way to get more of them onto D-38, because that I have no problem, because cars have to be slowing down for the stop sign anyway, but.
You could potentially get lots 10 and 11 down to, oh.
But that, that's where I am, and I just want to make sure you know that right up front. I mean, I'm all for the rezoning, I'd love to see the development, but the safety issue just worries the hell out of me, having that many driveways pulling out onto 141. Because I've driven that road enough to know that it's not a slow road. And even if they're all going 50, it's, still, that's pretty good. But I want to make sure you understand that, where we are at. Because I'm, if all we're voting on is the zoning, I have no problem with that, but I don't want to give you the thought that, that means I'm going to support the whole thing.
Is there a, and I, I don't know, I answered this.
Come on, come on up to the microphone for it.
I don't, somebody smarter than me can know this, but from having one driveway with the same number of people coming and accessing the highway, so you, if you do that, and then you have 10 homes, and those 10 homes are all trying to come out the same driveway at the same time of day, and, and at home, versus all having their own access, what, I guess, from a, from an access point to the highway, it's like, so then they're waiting in line, trying to get in, or, or somebody's coming out of that driveway, and they're trying to turn in, and then they're stopped on 141? I, I think that just saying, oh, one shared driveway, that everybody, I mean, that doesn't necessarily solve the safety issue either, it, that presents its own risks as well.
I think you could place that in such a way that you'd get it in the most opportune, because if you look at the service, they'd have to put them down here in order for more sight. I think one access would be a whole lot safer than six.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Haven't taken enough accident reports in my first life?
I haven't.
I, and again, I, I'd love to see the development. Rezone it, maybe we can work something out, but I don't know.
That just makes me feel like back when we discussed the Walgreens, this is on city council, when we put the Walgreens over there on Hamilton, they wouldn't allow any turn in or turn out off of 18th Street, and now it's like less safe, because now you've got people that try to drive over that median, I just.
I was going to say, you did a great job, because it's a terrible setup.
And we did it for safety, because they want people to make bad decisions on the road. I mean, where the county home property is, where the sheriff's training center is, that the traffic count's got to be higher. I have never in my life had an issue pulling out onto 141 there. And I can't imagine we would put all our deputies out there if it was so unsafe. I mean, honestly, it's really not that big a deal to pull out of your own driveway if you follow all the engineer's recommendations on, you know, how long or how the elevations have to be, and, I mean, if I'm building my house somewhere, I'm not going to build it where I think it's unsafe to pull out in the first place. But I guess if you're going to stick, you know, 350,000 into construction, and maybe 50, 60, 70, 80, I don't know how much these lots are going to cost, I mean, you're going to have 400 to 500,000 dollars minimum into one of these properties, I don't think you're going to do that if you feel unsafe. In fact, I feel like most people would probably be more safe pulling out into a lot, or on a, a street like this, than pulling out and, you know, some of the houses out on Pierce Street with on-street parking, that's, that seems more deadly to me.
Well, and again, I said, I wanted to be perfectly upfront with Mr. Peterson, that's where I stand.
Sure, yeah.
You can, all you want, but you're not going to change my opinion what the safety is.
Okay.
And I'm going to keep that as top, I'd love to see this thing go, because I think it's a perfect spot down there, if we can figure out a way to get more of the traffic out onto D-38, I'd feel a lot better, but.
I don't know, I just think you ask a developer to stick half a million dollars into a stubbed road or a cul-de-sac, and then all of a sudden, that's another 50 grand to each lot.
Well, I'm not asking him to do it, I'm letting him figure that out himself.
Well, but you are asking him to do it.
No.
You're saying you can't do it unless you do that.
I'm only one vote.
Yeah, I get that, but, I don't know, I mean.
Today, we're voting on the rezoning and not the restrictions.
Right.
Okay.
Well, even, yeah, I think.
Well, we can choose to take the restriction of a road out.
Well, that's part of the.
Yeah, the zoning commission only placed a condition.
On the plat.
Of the subdivision plat.
That's with the plat, that's not what we're voting on today.
So how do we touch that?
Well, if the board approves the rezone, the applicant can move forward with their minor subdivision application. It has already gone in front of the zoning commission, so the next step would be, once the zoning is changed, we would then introduce the subdivision. So typically, the Board of Supervisors will waive the third reading of the ordinance for a rezone, and so you could see this potentially as early as next week. If the board approves the rezone today, conducts the first reading of the ordinance, next week conducts the second reading of the ordinance, waive the third reading, move to adopt, and then we would come back that following week with the minor subdivision proposal.
That, that's, like I said, for me, that's where Mr. Peterson would be putting a lot of, down the line, not knowing, and I don't know how the rest of them feel, I'm just letting you know where I feel.
Matthew, anything for?
I've, there's been, by a couple others, I'm, I'm comfortable with the rezoning.
Um, I've been, uh, by a couple others, I'm, I'm comfortable with the rezoning. I tend to err on the side of personal responsibility with you, Mr. Raddick.
Any other questions, discussion before we move on? All right, so this is the vote.
Mr. Carr?
Yes?
Um, I, I perhaps, uh, just to point of clarification, in the event of a tie, uh, at the board, uh, what would happen in that situation?
Motion fails.
Yep, we lost you there for a minute, Matthew.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was a little mad, so I, uh, lost connection, but did you hear anything I said, Mr. Raddick?
Well, we heard most of it there.
Okay.
Guess we don't know when you stopped exactly.
Don't know when we did hear.
Yeah.
I'm sure it was the best speech ever given.
I err on the side of, uh, personal responsibility with you, but overall, the jury's still going to be out for me on, on how many D restrictions we can, uh, do to make it safe and, uh, anything else we can come up with.
Well, are we about done with our public hearing? Anyone else to be heard? All right, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Potabom, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, passes four to zero, so motion to approve zoning district map amendment. So this is to change from ag to ag estate. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any discussion on this? Again, this is just a change of the zoning, this is not where we discuss.
Plat.
Plat. All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, passes four to zero. All right. Motion to conduct first reading of the ordinance, I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion on it? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you everyone for the joys of zoning.
Thank you supervisors.
Moving on to item 10, this is something we've discussed in the past and I worked with a few people and brought something forward. Uh, so it's the quality assurance questionnaire. Uh, we took a lot of notes from our past questions and from what Des Moines was using and kind of combined them into our own version. Now we got it on the open session, I'd like to discuss it here, and anyone that would like to, say anything from the board first, we'll bring you guys up here in a second.
I, I would tell you, I'm, I think you did a terrific job, cause this was the final version I had a week ago.
Okay.
Except, we're not done with it yet.
Okay.
We still have a couple revisions that I think we have to make on this.
Okay.
To make it easier for our contractors and to make it cover subcontractors and a couple other deals. That's why I thought this was really good, cause last week was, this was my final version with Kenny. And, but we weren't done.
Okay.
So I can't vote to pass this today, because I think we still need some work on it.
No problem, no, and I just was getting it going.
Cause we've been working on this since the day we passed the new rules, so.
I added two things from what Kenny had had in the past.
I think one.
Yeah, there's the additional mains the contractor had operated under.
And then what it said, when we asked if it's ever been disbarred, and then he said, "Or suspended."
Yes, registration suspended, or any other names. So those were the two things that I had added to it.
But I, like I said, I, there's still some work on this, I think, that we need to get done. And one, and I told Kenny this, and I, actually, I thought he was going to work on this this week for us, but I had to be in Des Moines, where he has these questions, where he has all of these different things and I, we had, I had those as questions.
Individual questions.
Instead of putting, what, like, 10 different things on one question, to me, that's confusing as can be.
Sure.
And I told him, and I know, and Kenny told me he was trying to get less questions, and I said, "Okay, I understand that, but if you get less questions but don't get the questions answered that you need, it doesn't do us any good." And that's why we are still working on getting, getting that, so it's not so convoluted. Cause, I mean, if you look at that one.
It's a long one.
It's got all different kinds of things, and same thing up here, he's got the same. So I, like I said, I, I can't vote to, at least I won't vote to pass this today, cause I think we still need some work on it.
Well, we still got to discuss contract limits and stuff that we're going to look.
Yeah, and that, I talked to Kenny too about when we have to do these. Right now, the rule is for anything at 135,000.
That's a little low.
I think that's pretty low. I, and I told Kenny to come up, give me a recommendation, this was just last week when I talked to him. I said, "Give me a," I was thinking a million, I've had people tell me, "I think that's a little too high." I don't know.
Well, we talked about, yeah, I think it's a little high. I'd, I'd like to see 300 to 500,000, but that's me.
And I, I'm fine with that, I just think 135,000 is awful low to require this, cause 135,000 dollar bid anymore.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, a million's about like the bonding threshold though, so that does kind of make sense. I mean, anything we're going to actually pay for over multiple years.
And if, you know, if you get too low, the, having to put all this in, and the guy who took the bid is going to be doing all the work himself anyway. So it's almost a waste of his time and energy. So I'd like to see, and if, you know, and I talked to Rocky today, and he was saying 300,000, that's better than 135. But I think that's one of the other things we have to come up with.
Ernie Colt, 4526 Parkway, I would be good, I would be good up to that million, million dollar mark, because if, it's all in how, how responsible you want to be with taxpayer dollars. That's what it all boils down to. These are, these are, this is all our monies that are being used to fund these projects, part of our money. So this, it's, how low do you want to, where do you want to put that? And that's, that's totally up to you, but if you, if you put that million dollar threshold on there, what's going to happen is you're going to start seeing a lot of projects come in at 850, 900,000, you know? And that's a fact, I've seen it happen. So, um, they'll just break them up into sections. We'll say, "We got a, a, a 15 million dollar job to do over here," and we'll break it down into phases, we'll phase it out, you know, we'll do phases. So it's all in how you want to, how you want to do that. But yeah, this is a draft, and that's just, it's really a draft. That one question, I, I had an attorney go through there, and he's, he's had a hard time trying to figure out what all that, what all it says in that one question. And if, if you're going to add all that one question, it really leaves wide open the opportunity for somebody to check yes.
Did you have that list of questions that Des Moines uses too? I mean, I think.
What I wanted to, what I wanted to kind of shed a little light on today is the fact that, um, I've got a signed affidavit, notarized affidavit from a worker who's been working on some of these projects. This particular, he's been working for a contractor, a local contractor here that's been on a lot of, a lot of projects. And it's, it's, it's not good news for either of them. So, um, I'm going to follow up with this with the, with the county attorney, and then we're going to see what criminal charges that we have to pursue. But, uh, we could put 100 questions on that questionnaire, Keith, and if, if we don't have the right one, we might as well throw it all out. That's kind of where that's at. That's really all I got. It's just a draft, we'll, we'll get it next week or two.
Kenny had a list of the Des Moines stuff, I had given it to him to come up with.
I got it from Craig.
Probably the same one then.
Yeah, probably.
But that's where I am on this, I, I, this was a work in progress, and we're real close to being done with it, I think. But we still need some tweaking to finish it off.
For sure.
Cause I do want to get some wording in there about the subs.
Yep.
Specifically, cause that's where, that's where you're going to have the problems.
Specifically, the subs. Non-registered subs. That's where the problems are.
Does item number 12 not address the, the subs, or are you talking about another, uh, question?
Pardon, pardon me, I didn't catch that.
Can you repeat that, Matthew?
Does item 12?
Does item 12 mention the subcontractors sufficiently?
Mr., but we were talking about having registered subcontractors, and I'm not sure the exact wording would be, but something along that line. It, that one says that it, it affirms that its subcontractors shall adhere to all quality assurance items.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't cover it yet. This hasn't been approved by me or my legal department.
But I, uh.
I don't want to move forward until that language is in there.
And that's what we talked, that's what I talked to Kenny about last week.
It skirts around it all, it just skirts around it, and you know how they are with the legal terms.
I just figured that that put the burden on the contractor taking the contract to ensure that his subs are following it.
We want, we, we, we have to have registered subs. They have to have a contractor registration number, they have to have a work comp number, talk about safety.
Yeah.
I got a signed out date here that this guy would have liked to have had some safety issue.
Sure.
He would have had some work comp on one of those jobs. Just put it in some circumstances, or he feared for his life, he couldn't do anything about it.
And especially with the bigger jobs, the general, you know, if he hires a subcontractor and feels confident with him, yeah, we're putting the burden on him, but he doesn't really know what the subs doing. That's why a registration number or there, something that shows that they've got, that they're meeting the requirements.
Does the Des Moines information have something that, okay, requires subs to be?
Absolutely.
Okay, I thought we had copied the question or had that.
Oh, no, there's, there's a whole bunch of more questions.
Yeah, but the, some of the questions I, I didn't see as important to have on there was, did you, did you take any other jobs, or are you working on any other jobs? I, I mean, I think the burden is still on them to complete any jobs they bid.
And I'm not looking to copy Des Moines thing, I just want to make sure we have what we need covered, covered.
We've been working, you know, six years ago, when I, when I took this position, I started trying to push some of this stuff, right? In 2016, yeah, we had, uh, had some success. It wasn't the, it wasn't the, the questionnaire that I really needed, Keith.
Sure.
Before, I watched a lot of things happen, um, with our tax dollars and, and, and I'm on these jobs all the time.
Sure.
And so, the law changed, and we got the ordinance passed, and now we want to, we want to strengthen it up to really protect our taxpayer monies.
And that just proved the power of lobbyists. Cause we, along with several other places, passed that, and that year at the legislature, they got the law changed.
While I'm not in favor of adding more regulations and hurdles to all these, uh, all these questionnaires and, and what we have to put our contractors and subcontractors through, unfortunately, we have some unscrupulous contractors out there that have no interest in maintaining the health and safety of the employees. And I'm, we, I mean, it is, if that's what it takes, because we've got contractors and subcontractors that aren't doing what they need to do, then I guess it's, it's only right to make sure that these employees are protected.
And the good thing for the contractors, once they've done this once, it'll be pretty simple, cause they'll have it on file, they just make the changes for the next job they bid on. The first time will be a pain, and that's why one good thing is we're not making everybody bidding the jobs doing it, cause the law changed. You only do this after you get the bid.
Only the winner.
Yep. They know that going in, I don't think any of them are going to complain about having to fill it out.
Well, that's where the discussion of the dollar threshold, so if it's a million dollars, well, a guy that's bidding million dollar jobs probably has somebody that does all the bid work and he can fill out the paperwork.
Exactly.
Whereas if it's like a 300,000 dollar job, you know, it's probably just the guy bidding the job that also runs the office, so.
And, and something else too, you know, when you, when you allow that million dollar threshold, we have to have some sort of a, a watchdog on this up to the million mark too, right?
Sure.
We don't want to leave that leg wide open.
No.
But yeah.
But I think that's part of the discussion, we're still working on, what number, cause it's a number.
Yes.
You know, if you're more comfortable with 300,000, okay, you know? I just put a million out first of all, cause it's a nice round number.
How prudent do you want to be, you know?
Well, our bonding threshold is 1.2 million, and that's considered basically your major jobs or, you know, something where you're going to bond every year or so. If you were going to phase something, that's about the dollar amount it would be, so you go slightly under that. Uh, questions that, uh, Ernie Colt would prefer to have on there, or more clarity on?
Yeah, I, like I, like I was saying, I, I haven't gotten the, because the way they've reconfigured this, it's, it's.
Well, you're working hand in hand with Marty and, and I'm.
Yeah, well, I got to get that, I got to get this language in here, inserted in here, and then come back with it.
Cause I was planning on meeting with Kenny here in the next week or so.
You know, we should have a threshold.
Hopefully by then we'll have it worked out.
Different plan for what to do up to the jobs to that level.
Craig, anything for the good? I got something I want to get you from workforce here too, after, if we finish up quickly. All right, well, I'll move to delete it as an action item.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt to delete for today. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Or anyone opposed? It's deleted, four to zero. Uh, reports on committee meetings, Matthew on the phone?
No, sir.
Rocky?
No, sir.
Done here.
I'm missing my, uh, CEO meeting with workforce development, it started at six. Uh, citizen concerns, round two. Lot of zoning talk tonight, board concerns. Just the support of terrorism, right? Was the big concern. All right, see none, we're adjourned.